So, sorry for that. Good evening. Thank you for your patience and welcome to this meeting of the Merrimack School Board this Monday, April 18th. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And again, thank you for your patience. I know we're starting 11 minutes late. The goal tonight was to dial in both Board Members Davis Powell and Board Member Michael Thompson, our newest Board Member, who are both traveling for business. Based upon this, based upon RSAs, if they cannot hear us and we cannot hear them extemporaneously, we cannot have them included legally in this meeting. So for that reason, because of technical difficulties, they will be considered excused for tonight's meeting. So again, we apologize for the delay and the technical difficulties, but we will be moving on with the three members who are here. So, we will welcome Michael Thompson at our May 2nd Board Meeting. The next order of business is the School Board reorganization. Basically, what we'll be doing tonight is we will be voting for a Chair and Vice Chair. So that being said, are there any nominations for Chair? Andy?
Huge crowd here. Um, I'd like to nominate Shannon Barnes for Chair of the School Board.
Shannon Barnes. This is gonna be a rough night, guys. Bear with us.
I'd like to nominate Shannon Barnes for Chair of the School Board for the coming year.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Cinda. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Well, we're not gonna hold it against you that you work for a telecommunications company.
I didn't know about the bridge until five minutes ago.
Right. So, um, the bottom line is that Shannon's been on the Board. This is her seventh year. She's starting her third term. She's been in a Vice Chair role for the last year. She's, she puts in the time and the effort and, and has shown the desire and the ability to lead the Board. So, I believe that she'd be a great candidate to run us for the next year, especially sort of taking us through four years underneath Chris Ortega, who is unfortunately not here anymore. So, with that, I'd certainly support wholeheartedly your nomination for Chair.
Thank you. Cinda?
Ditto.
Great. Okay. It was two of yours as Vice Chair, not one, but who's counting? That being said, we will put the motion to a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? And your position, student rep?
In favor.
Thank you, Jake. That being said, we now need to take a motion for the Vice Chair for School Board. Cinda?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Andy Schneider as the Vice Chairman of our School Board.
It's my pleasure to second that nomination. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, please. Andy has shown great leadership on the School Board, as well as his prior years on the Budget Committee. I think he'd be a great Vice Chairman, and I'll be voting for him.
So, I thought you might. That being said, I second, I second your, your confidence in Andy. I think he'll do a great job and, and give me the definite support that we need to, to get the Board's work done. So, thank you very much. So, that being said, we will put the motion for Vice Chair to a vote. All those in favor of Andy Schneider for Vice Chair, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? None? And the student reps' position?
In favor.
Thank you, Jake. So, the motion carries 3-0-0. Student rep in favor, and we will go on to the next agenda item, which is Commitment to the Board of Ethics. It's our last housekeeping before we get going with what's going to be a very lively evening, from what I can see. This is gonna be great for you as well. The School Board, every year signs a Code of Ethics, basically outlining the job that we do and committing to upholding the values of the position we've been elected to. So, what I will do is, I will start. Andy, if you want to take Honor in Conduct, Integrity of Character, and Cinda, if you can take Commitment to Service, we can read through it and then take a motion. Go ahead.
Question. Would it be possible or appropriate to move it till next week? I mean, the next School Board meeting when we have everyone here, or do we need to do it at this particular year?
We've already done Michael's, because we knew he was traveling. So, we went through it at a meeting prior to today to make sure that he knew, and Davis would be a renewal. So, for that reason, it might not be necessary.
Okay. That's fine. I just wanted to check. Thank you.
Nope. Fair enough. So, what we're gonna do is read through the Merrimack School Board Code of Ethics. "As a Merrimack, as a member of the Merrimack School Board, I shall promote the best interests of the district by adhering to the following ethical standards and affix my signature to the same. The first area is trustworthy and responsibilities. First, I will always remember that my first and greatest concern will be the educational welfare of the students in the Merrimack School District. Second, I will promote the account, I will be accountable to the public by accurately representing district policies, programs, priorities, and progress. Third, I will be responsive to the community by seeking its involvement in district affairs and by communicating its priorities and concerns. Fourth, I will work to ensure prudent and accountable use of district resources and never lose sight of the fiscal responsibility owed to the taxpayers of the district. Fifth, I will make no personal promise or take private action that may compromise my performance or my responsibilities or those of my fellow Board Members. And finally, I will avoid being placed in a position of conflict of interest and refrain from using my Board position for personal or partisan gain." And if you could take the next section?
Sure. Honor in Conduct. "I will be honest, fair, just, and impartial in all my decisions and actions. I will encourage and respect open dialogue and listen with an open mind while working for consensus. I will respect the majority decision as the decision of the Board. And integrity of character. I will consistently uphold all applicable laws, rules, policies, and district procedures. I will not disclose information that is confidential by law or that will undermine the district."
Commitment to Service. "I will focus my attention on fulfilling the Board's responsibilities of goal-setting, policymaking, and evaluation. I will diligently prepare for and attend Board meetings. I will avoid personal involvement in activities the Board has delegated to the Superintendent, and I will inform myself about relevant educational issues."
Thank you. With that being said, if we could all sign and date our commitment to the Board, the Code of Ethics, we will go on to item number five, which is Public Participation. Jake?
I'd just suggest real quick that you give this to the student rep at the beginning of our term in September this coming year and in the future, as opposed to at the very end in April.
Fair enough. We live, we learn. Thank you, Jake. So, we're opening for public participation. This is the community's opportunity to share their thoughts on items pertinent to the School District. And if you do come to the microphone, we just ask that you say your name and address. I knew there was one, so I was waiting.
Hello. My name is Grace Corbett, and I live at 10 Victoria Drive. And I'm addressing the track tonight. So, hello. Thank you for your time tonight. My name is Grace Corbett, and I'm a sophomore at Merrimack High School. I also have been running for Merrimack for four years now. When I started track back in 7th grade, it was instantly my favorite thing, and it just clicked with me. Now, mind you, this is how I felt about it when we were practicing at the middle school, where practices consisted of running around the school. I had never set foot on a track. I remember getting off the bus for the first time at the track at the high school. It was so fascinating to me how every person on the track was running simultaneously without disturbing anyone else. When I saw this in the track, I fell in love completely. As a younger kid, I always had problems with big places and crowds or pressure situations, so I was a little hesitant with the idea of racing, because it frightened me. But track taught me to push through and have confidence. Track also taught me self-discipline and work ethic. It also helps me relieve any stresses in my life and is my sanctuary that I look forward to visiting every day. Track also introduced me to some of the best people in my life. The relationships I have built with the people here, people who have graduated, coaches, and even people from other towns are relationships that will last a lifetime. They truly are my best friends, and the love for track ties us all together. This bond we have together and to the track is something that we will cherish for the rest of our lives. When I race on Merrimack track, I feel strong and in control. It is my safe place. It is where my family is, and it's my home. Thank you. Next, I would like to share with you another voice from Merrimack, Blake Williams. He attends University of Vermont and could not be here but asked for his piece to be said. This proves what I had to say earlier about friendships gained through the Merrimack track program. Blake is a very talented runner himself, and for him to write something for us to share should prove that the impact the track has had on us as a team and shows the bond that still remains with track graduates. So, this is Blake talking. Every day in high school, I look forward to getting out on the track. No matter what the day held for me, I was angry by whichever workout John Snell had designed for us. It would be a shame if present and future MMS and MHS students don't get the chance to have track become a part of their lives if they so choose. The work I put in, the discipline I learned, and the pride I felt representing myself in my school at state and New England competitions would be nonexistent had I not had a track to call my own. The high standard Merrimack track has set throughout its history would be greatly lowered without a home track. I do hope Merrimack can continue its track program at full capacity, host meets, and further strengthen its running community, all of which depends upon the implementation of a proper track. Blake Williams. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak under Public Participation? Please come to the mic and state your name for the record. If anyone else is going to speak, if you could just start lining up, so it goes a little faster, that'd be great. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Bailey Correo, and I live on 2 Great Stone Drive. I'm speaking on behalf of my friend Allison and my past teammate, who is now a freshman in college. And this is her speaking. "To whom this may concern, hello. My name is Allison Stankowitz, and I graduated from Merrimack High School in 2015. I'm currently a freshman at Saint Anselm College, where I'm studying nursing. It has come to my attention that the proposition for a new school budget was struck down, and along with it, so was the opportunity for the high school to build a new track, news that is truly devastating to so many Merrimack track and cross-country alumni. What struck me as particularly alarming was the fact that the track is no longer usable after this year. This matter is important to me, as I began participating in the Merrimack cross-country and track programs in the 7th grade and was named captain of these teams my senior year of high school. For six years, I spent nearly every day after school running on the track at the high school, as I, along with my teammates, were shaped into not only better athletes, but better people. As you all can likely infer, spending so much time on the track allowed it to become something of a second home to myself, as well as many other students. I believe with all my heart that this is something worth preserving. The track and cross-country programs are arguably two of the most successful programs offered by the Merrimack School District. Many of the teammates have gone on to win state titles in their respective events, while countless others have gone on to compete at the college level. Throughout my six years participating in the programs, the teams have represented the town of Merrimack with pride, demonstrating respect, kindness, and sportsmanship when competing against teams throughout New England. Failure to provide a track for these teams would punish a group of kids who have done nothing but represent their town with pride. Without a new track, these students will also have no proper place to practice, quite possibly destroying the opportunity for so many athletes to thrive in their sport and go on to compete at the collegiate level. The track at the high school provides an endless amount of opportunities to all students of the Merrimack School District. This is largely due to the fact that both track and cross-country, track and cross-country are no-cut programs, meaning that any student who wishes to participate in the sport may do so. Failure to replace the track is a failure to provide the opportunity for so many students to join a team that has a place for everyone. School is often a difficult place. Many students struggle to find a group of people in which they belong. Through track, these students may find their place, their friends, and their second home. However, with no track, these students who may be searching for a place to belong may have an even more difficult time finding a place where they feel accepted, important even. For six years, I believed that I took for granted a place that became my second home. The track of the high school became the place where I found something I was good at, as well as a place where I met my best friends. As long as the track exists in a usable condition, the opportunity for every student, regardless of athletic ability or background, exists. The practice facility of the most successful teams offered by the Merrimack School District exists. The place where I, along with so many people, grew to become a person I am today, exists. It is for this reason that I wrote this today. I understand that this matter is not as simple as I may understand it to be. I do not fully understand how the process of a school budget works, however, I do believe that there is, has to be a way to repair the track. I wrote this today asking you all to find that way. I ask this of you because I believe with all my heart that the students of Merrimack shouldn't be allowed to the same opportunities that I was allowed growing up. For if I were not granted these opportunities, I do not believe that I will be, I would be the well-rounded human being that I am today. I kindly ask that you all find a way to preserve these opportunities for the future of Merrimack School District, as well as to preserve the place that became the second home of so many. Thank you. Allison Stankowitz.
My name is Megan Glisten. I live at 10 Edgewood Ave, and I'm a junior at Merrimack High School. I have been running track since my freshman year. In this time, my character, friendships, and love for running have developed significantly. Having the track as a place that we can commonly call home has made the team stronger and more united. The high school and middle school teams use the track daily as the main resource to success. In addition to the running programs, many other sports teams and all of the gym classes at the high school use the track for conditioning. Residents of our community go to the track when looking for a place to exercise. Further, having a track brings visitors to our town when we host meets or when people from neighboring towns use it for a workout. These visitors in our community benefit our local businesses. As a final illustration, picture yourself driving down a road in Merrimack just after winter, attempting to avoid all the potholes and patches that cover the surface is impossible. Although you can bypass most of them, you still drive over a few that make it uncomfortable and potentially dangerous. This is the same feeling that everyone who uses our track experiences. Overall, without a track, our school, as well as our community as a whole, will be a lesser place, and that is why a new track is necessary for this coming year. Thank you for your time.
My name is Michael O'Hara. I live at 18 Packer Drive. I'm a senior at Merrimack High School and also a member of the track and field team. I'm here today to tell you my story about how track has affected my life and why we need a new track so others can have the same opportunities. I've always had an interest in running and joined the track team in 7th grade. Track has always given me something to work for and make me feel good. In a way, track has changed my life. I am not the best student, and I do not have incredible grades, and for the past six years, I have struggled with passing classes. In high school, you need a certain grade average and GPA to participate in sports, and if you do not meet the standards, you are ineligible to compete in that sport. The track team has been my motivation for keeping my grades up and passing my classes. To be perfectly honest, without track, I don't know if I would have made it through high school. I know for a fact that there are other kids on the team that experience the same thing as me. I know that if we do not get a new track, there will still be a track program in the team, and I know that because I am a senior and graduating, this has little effect on me. But without a track, not as many people would be on the team, and the program would fall apart. Our, our team deserves better than that. Without a track, we would lose a great team that has accomplished so much, such as the girls' 4x800 meter relay, which won their state meets and went on to compete at the New England Championships. We have Chase Sweeney on our team. He won the 600 meters race at states and won his spot on the New Hampshire All-State Team. Our boys' 4x400 meter relay ran the fourth fastest time ever run by a New Hampshire team. And Jared Ottman, just a couple days ago, ran his first 4 minute and 30 second mile. This list goes on and on, but without a track to practice on and improve on, that list will become shorter. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Elijah Gomont. I live at 5 Profile Drive. I'm currently a sophomore at our high school, and I transferred into the high school from the Academy for Science and Design at the start of my freshman year. I'm not gonna lie, but I wasn't very popular. I didn't have many friends at all. Most people didn't reach out or try to become close to me. I had three close friends when I transferred in, while everyone else, I didn't really know. Outside of them, I wasn't invited anywhere by anyone or talked to outside of school. Looking back, that year was very lonely, and I didn't have much fun at all. But then I made a decision that truly changed my life. Sorry. I joined the track team. On the, on that team, I found what I was looking for, for that whole year, a large group of friends that cared about each other and all loved the same thing, track. I was quickly roped into the life of a runner and started to really love track, just like everyone else on the team. It felt very rewarding to be able to, to try my hardest alongside my friends and see how, and see my hard work paid off. Victories for the track team. Without the track or track team, I would not have a close group of friends. I'd probably be out of shape and lonely. The track is so important because it changed my life for the better so much, and I genuinely wish that I can help the people that follow me have the same chance that I did, a chance to make close and long-lasting friendships and learn the values of hard work and teamwork. Please, I ask of you, find a way to get a track for the Merrimack.
And Grace and Bailey came to me before the meeting started, asking for a solid and seeing if I could read one for them, because I had a lot to read tonight. So, for them, I will read this last, this last letter from an alumnus. It says, "To whom it may concern, my name is Brian Stankowitz. I graduated from Merrimack High School in 2013 and went through the Merrimack School District since 1st grade with Mrs. Healy. I'm currently an undergraduate student at Saint Anselm College with a major in accounting and a minor in criminal justice, and will graduate in May of 2017. I am also the captain of the varsity cross-country team. I am where I am today because of John Snell and the Merrimack High Cross Country and Track and Field Teams. Being a member of these teams shaped who I am as a person. I was able to compete for these teams and am able to compete for, at the Division II level of the NCAA because of practicing on the track at Merrimack High School every day for four years. It is to my understanding that the school's budget proposal was struck down and that the track will not be resurfaced. I have also heard that the track may be torn up, which is why I'm writing this to you today. For me and many of my former teammates, this is devastating news. The track was more than an oval to us. It was a home. At the time, we took it for granted, but looking back on it, that oval was so much more. During my career at Merrimack High School, we hosted two Division I NHIA championship meets in 2010 and 2011, the NHIA Outdoor Meet of Champions in 2010 and 2011 for Merrimack Invitational Meets, one of the biggest outdoor invitational meets in the state, and numerous duel meets against other teams. I used it at least five days a week when I could even, when I could, and even used it a few times when it was covered in snow. Practicing there every day allowed us to contend for both individual and state championships. Even before my years at Merrimack High School, I was on the Merrimack Middle School Cross Country and Track and Field Teams. We were practicing at the track during my years there as well. Between athletes, students, and other members of the Merrimack community, hundreds of people use the track each week. To me, being able to practice every day on the track allowed me to be recruited by different colleges to run for them. Without this, I know my life would be completely different. If we did not have a track to practice on every day, I know for a fact the team would have suffered, and we would have not been as good as we were. The Merrimack Cross Country and Track Programs are arguably the most successful sports teams in the history of the school in terms of championships won and times being runner-up. You can look at the banners and plaques for evidence of that. Several of my teammates and runners of old would also go on to compete at the college level, covering all divisions. Friends from other schools without a track are as easily accessible as ours, have told me that their teams were terrible and that they were not happy with their performances during meets. Merrimack runners always do well, and it's because we can practice specific techniques on the track to improve and get better every day. If any program deserves a new facility, it is this program. Without a usable track, some future Merrimack students will have these opportunities taken away from them. I understand the price of the track is expensive, and while I'm not familiar with how the budget process works, there must be a way that we can at least prepare the tougher areas on the track. I believe that everyone should have the same opportunities as I've had, as they would not have these opportunities if they had not, did not have a track. I used that track to run, to practice, to compete, and to get better, but it did so much more for me as a person than it did for me as an athlete. I grew up on that track. I grew up from a young, immature 13-year-old freshman in high school to an almost 21-year-old adult in college, doing internships and applying for jobs. Without the track, my current life would be completely different. I would not be running in college. I would not have the friends I do right now. I would not have the internship I have right now. I would not have the same experiences I have and will have. I would not be the same person I am right now. I went through a very dark time during the second half of high school, and I could go to the track and escape from it all. Whether it was one mile or three, practices over April break, or meets in the cold weather, the track was always there for me. It has given me a lot, and now it's my turn to give it back. I ask that you please consider saving the track at Merrimack High School, not just for people who have used it and benefited from it in the past, but for people who are benefiting from it currently and will in the future. I will continue to do everything I can to help this effort. Thank you. Respectfully, Brian J. Stankowitz, Merrimack High School, class of 2013." So, this is truly being a marathon Monday tonight. That being said, I want to just give you a round of applause for everyone that came up to speak and support this effort. We appreciate the voice that you've shared, and we will be deliberating on the, the subject later, our budget later in, in our meeting. So, if there's no other public participation, we are going to close public participation and go on to item number six, and are patiently awaiting Merrimack Middle School to give us their year in review. So, I invite to the table Adam Carragher, Shawna DeMore, who are principal and vice principal respectively, and educate, their educators and students. So, welcome.
So, thank you and good evening. Mrs. DeMore is passing out a program that has a little bit of the information that we'll be reviewing. So, I wanted to first off, thank you for having us here this evening. It's always fun to come and brag a little bit about what we're doing at the Merrimack Middle School. You know, one of the things that I think is always on the forefront of our mind is this idea of desirable difficulty, something that is challenging to you, something that pushes you, but at the same time doesn't defeat you. And one of the things that I would say to you at the middle school this year, we have a number of those types of situations where people are gonna talk about these desirable, desirable difficulties, these ideas, these questions, the things that drive them, and the things that have impacted them and their learning at the middle school. So, we have a, a number of students here that are gonna represent the middle school this evening, and I would say to you, it is just a cross-section of the Merrimack Middle School. It's a small piece, but it is a very important piece of the Merrimack Middle School. So, Mrs. DeMore is going to kind of host and call people up as we, as we go through our evening.
Thank you, Mr. Carragher. So, first up, I want to introduce our Technology Education students and educator, Sue Heinberg, and students Marcus, Brené, Madison, Danielle, Andrea, Adele, and Adam is absent today.
Thank you very much, Mrs. DeMore. It's a pleasure to be here, and it's a pleasure to be surrounded by so many wonderful students tonight. The first student that's going to speak about Technology Education is Marcus Harold. He's gonna be talking about the Research and Design Module today. Can I move this slide?
Am I, am I supposed to tell my address, too?
No, no.
All right. All right. So, I'm Marcus Harold, and in a module that, that I was in, it was Research and Design. And basically, what this was about was, we were challenged to make a carbon dioxide-propelled car. We put a cartridge in the back and then shoot it, and we try to make it go as fast as we can. And we all have to shoot them. We race them against each other. Previously, the record was 45 miles an hour, which is pretty fast, and it's not scaled. It's real 45 miles an hour. And we, all my life, I've been interested in building things and making things blow up and all that kind of stuff. So, so this was right up my alley. And what, what I decided to do was go with an aerodynamic design that was also lightweight. And this, this module was perfect for me because it experiment, it allowed me to try everything that I love, like airplanes and engineering. And I actually, I set the record. I think I went 52 miles an hour, so I beat it by seven miles an hour. And then, throughout the year, another person beat me by another two or three miles an hour. And I'm like, wait, that can't be. So, so throughout, and then we, I came actually a few weeks ago to race them again, because I, I'm like, okay, someone didn't beat me. So, so I was looking at it, and she had actually used smaller tires in the back. So, I'm like, all right, all right, here, here we go. So, so we, we raced them again when I had the smaller tires on the back, and then I ended up going a little bit faster. So, it was, it was, it's a really cool process, being able to experiment with it and challenge yourself to make it, do the best you can. It was really fun.
I hope your parents have a good first aid kit.
Yes.
Hello. My name's Brené.
I'm Madison.
We are the current record holders with holding 18 pounds for the bridge strength competition in tech ed class.
The requirements for our bridge was that we, it had to be under 30 grams in weight.
When designing our bridge, we wanted to make sure to include lots of triangles, as you can see, in our design, since the triangle is the strongest shape when building a structure.
We then cut our balsa wood sticks to the right length in size, and then we glued them together.
When we originally weighed our bridge, it only weighed 15 grams, so we knew that we could add- we could add a lot more glue and bridge sticks to further enforce our structure. We added bridge sticks diagonally to prevent flexing of the bridge, and we also added a ton of glue to bring our total weight to twenty-eight grams.
We then tested it by hanging a bucket from the bottom and putting one-pound weights inside, and we ended up being able to hold eighteen pounds, so that was our capacity.
My name's Adele, and in tech ed class, Mrs. Heinberg, our tech ed teacher, gave everyone limited supplies, and they were balsa wood strips, paper clips, ruler, a spoon, paper cup, cardboard, rubber bands, and masking tape, and we had to launch a ping-pong ball from the catapult that we made. Once everyone got into groups of four, it was up to us to make a catapult that launches a ping-pong ball as far as possible with the limited time and items we had. For the final project, we only used cardboard, a spoon, two rubber bands, masking tape, and a paper clip.
Hi, my name is Andrea, and as all great builders start out, we started out by brainstorming, when everyone shared their ideas. We ended up with two great ideas, and we decided to test one out. So we chose Daniel's idea because it looked well thought out and well constructed. So we started building it. We made minor adjustments to his design. For example, we added a restriction, which is the paper clip, making the spoon at a forty-degree angle, making the ball go farther, as well as using smaller rubber bands to support the spoon. These minor adjustments and modifications led to our final design.
My name is Daniel, and I'll be talking about the design. We knew that at forty-five degrees, you could get the maximum distance and height. Without the paper clip, it would be a lot more than forty-five degrees. So we tried to use the paper clip so that we can get the spoon to release the ball at about forty-five degrees. The spoon also kept apart the support, the cardboard supports, so that we would have more tension. Because of our limited resources, we found that the easiest and sturdiest way to hold a catapult was using the cardboard as supports.
Thank you. Next up, we have our family and consumer science educator, Anne Bergeron is joining us, along with students Olivia, Cole, and Brittany, and they're going to answer the question, "How do modules prepare students for the future?"
Thank you, and I am Anne Bergeron, and it's my pleasure to bring several of our students from the family and consumer science room to talk to you and tell you a little bit about the modules and the sewing club also.
So hi, my name's Olivia Gage, and I'm here to tell you about the importance of FACS at Merrimack Middle School. FACS stands for Family and Consumer Science, and this class helps prepare students for the future as adults. There are several modules that make up FACS. These are Investing in Careers, Sewing and Design, Money Management, Early Childhood Development, Interior Design, Merciful Cooking, Life Skills, and Baking and Measurement. Money Management helps kids learn basic financial skills such as how to pay their bills and write checks. The multiple cooking modules in our FACS class assist kids by giving them kitchen skills. Our Sewing and Design Module aids students to develop the ability to repair clothes. Through all these modules, students will be prepared to grow up with the skills and life that they will need as adults and parents.
Hi, my name is Cole Camerlin, and I'm here to talk about Family and Consumer Science, and some things that I learned in the module Money Management is how to fill out checks, do taxes. Also, in another module, Microwave and Cooking, I learned about nutritional value and how certain dishes for certain types of food are used for certain devices. Some other things that I learned in Sewing and Design are the basing stitch and the cross stitch, and some other ones too. The importance of Family and Consumer Science to me are, it taught me a lot about everyday things for adulthood and young adulthood. Another reason why this class is important is because this is a class where kids in school look forward to during the day because of how diverse the class is and how much fun you have.
Hi, my name is Brittany, and I'm going to talk about Family and Consumer Science. Family Consumer Science, or FACS, is a unified arts course that students take for one quarter of the whole year. Although many students wish for that time period to be much longer than it is, because FACS is a course where you don't have to question when will I use this stuff in the real world? Because the sole purpose of this course is to teach you skills that you will use daily. Before entering FACS class on the first day of seventh grade, I didn't know how to sew, cook very good, cook good food that was still healthy, or have any idea what I wanted to do as a career. But after I left, I was cooking, sewing, and now I know what I want to do as a job. This is all thanks to modules like Baking and Measuring, Investigating Careers, Sewing and Design, Money Management, Early Childhood, Interior Design. Where I like most about, where I'm like most kids, enjoy learning about skills I could use immediately, while doing hands-on and fun activities, with teachers who give you freedom but help when needed. So I think I speak on behalf, on behalf of all students when I say that FACS is an enjoyable yet educational class that is a great addition to the curriculum at Merrimack Middle School.
Thank you very much. Next up, I'd like to invite some of our Gateway students and the educator Linda Mandra to talk about what's cool in manufacturing in New Hampshire.
Hi, good evening. I'm Linda Mandra, gifted and talented specialist at the middle school and the high school. And I have with me two distinguished guests who are going to talk to you about a really cool project called, What's So Cool About Manufacturing?
Okay. So we were invited by the New Hampshire school thing to participate in an activity called What's So Cool, What's So Cool About Manufacturing? So basically, what we did was we selected Senko Bain, and we researched their website to form questions to ask some of their employees, like, what's so cool about manufacturing? And what are some of the different products you make? And stuff like that. And we worked with a team of eleven students to make our final product.
So part of the documentary is we had to visit the company, like, in route, to do interviews, to tour the facility, learn more about the company personally from the plant manager. So the main purpose of the visit was to interview and talk to real people that worked there. Most of them were engineers, we had a product manager, and we even got the chance to interview the plant manager.
Okay, so for the video contest, we had to follow some of the criteria, such as it has to be under three minutes, we needed a minimum of two interviews, and some other basic criteria. We, we learned about some products such as hazmat suits, radoms, and a lot more. And then we had to, after we got the interviews and all the film, we had to go back and we had to edit it all.
Some of the challenges we faced was keeping all the video that we got within the time restraints of three minutes, deciding what we filmed should go in, what we should not put in, and taking what some people liked and some people didn't like, and deciding what type, which video to put in and which video not to. We had multiple ideas for like intros and outros, a theme to keep, and eventually, we narrowed it down to one, which was a very difficult choice. And one thing that we definitely learned is not to go there and film as much as you can, to only film the certain pieces that you need, so it makes it easier in the long run.
So some of the things that I learned was that not only are core classes important to your education, but also projects like this that make you think and perfect, and we got to learn some really interesting things. Working on a team is also a good thing because we learn to compromise, cooperate, but also put our heads together to make a good final video.
Some things I took away is definitely planning is key. When you start a project like this, you want to get an idea in your head, and while you're making it, you want to make sure that you're always thinking of that goal. So you only get things that are necessary for that, and you don't get anything extra or anything far away from that topic.
Thank you.
Next up, I'd like to invite up Mrs. Krodo and students Morgan Ottman and Casey Happiger to talk about Pantene Beautiful Lengths and how we can contribute to a greater cause.
Hello, I'm Maggie Krodo, and I'm the health teacher, or one of the health teachers at Merrimack Middle School. And Morgan and Casey are here because they brought a great idea that will be happening in a few weeks.
We spent a lot of time in health, learning about stress and how to cope with our stressors, especially the stressors we can't control, like a family member or friend being diagnosed with cancer. We have many students at MMS that have been affected by cancer in some way. For me, it was around Thanksgiving. My puppy was diagnosed with cancer, and I wanted to do something. We asked if we could have a hair donation.
On Thursday, May 12th, after school, we will be having a Pantene Beautiful Lengths hair donation. We want to raise awareness and do something to help those who have been diagnosed and will lose their hair due to treatment. We have about ten people who are planning to donate, and there are four local stylists donating their time to style everyone's hair after it's cut. If any of you would like to come to the event, we would love to have you.
Thank you. Next up, I'd like to invite Mrs. Nocella, and I don't believe Mrs. Fitzgerald could make it tonight, and Brittany Fisher from Student Council, answering, "What are ways we can help our community?" Absent tonight is Thomas.
Hello, my name is Diane Nocella, and I'm one of the co-advisors for the Merrimack Middle School Student Council. And we have Brittany Fisher here, who is our president of the Student Council, and she'd just like to share a few things about what the Student Council has been involved with this year.
Okay, so in September of Student Council elections are held, and then a little bit after in later September, we have executive board elections. So we have a treasurer, a secretary, a vice president, and a president. And they make, they try to maintain the Student Council, and they help with major decisions. And in October, we held a school dance, and we also coordinated a dress-up day where students could come in Halloween costumes. And students really enjoyed that because we had like a best dress contest where you could win prizes. In November, we had Take a Compliment Day, where hundreds of compliments were hung around the building, and people could take one from themselves or give one to a friend to make them feel good for the day. The Giving Tree was one of our biggest events we held this year. It was held in the beginning of September, and we worked with the Merrimack Lioness Club, which provides us with a list of items that are needed for local families in need. And we hung these tags on a tree. We had a Christmas tree in the maid lobby of the Merrimack Middle School, and people could take tags down, and they could buy the gifts, and we would give them unwrapped to the Merrimack Lioness Club. In February, in February, we sold candy grams, and in March, we held a dodgeball tournament where all these students, they came in coordinated costumes, and they played dodgeball against each other. And then I think we gave away ice cream as a prize at King Cone. And we also had a student versus staff basketball game, which was very fun to watch. In April, we had another school dance, and Earth Day, Student Council members are going to give up their lunch period and pick up trash around the school. Going to go deep into the woods and pick up trash. In May, we're going to hold a food drive for St. James Church Food Pantry, and food pantries in the nation have a low, very low inventory in the spring because everyone donates during February, and they have no food in the spring. This June, we will organizing an eighth-grade farewell gathering. This event will entail the eighth graders gathering together in the cafeteria where ice cream sundaes will be served. There'll be a music, a slideshow of the year's events, and a yearbook signing. And the Student Council raises the majority of their money at the school dances. This money will be used to fund some of the events mentioned before. It's used to purchase videos, books, historical productions for teachers in the building. And last year, a $500 donation was made by the Merrimack Safeguard. Coalition? Student Council is a really great after-school activity that I look forward to. It is where we can help our community as students and not as adults. Thank you.
So we have two first LEGO leagues. We're going to start with the one at Merrimack Middle School with the advisor, Matt Spatell, who's from Merrimack High School, and student Olivia Gage.
So, hello again. I'm Olivia Gage, and I'm going to talk about the math and science clubs at Merrimack Middle School. Most clubs are run by high school students. In particular, Matt Spatell here, a member of Chop Shop 166, led many clubs over the course of the school year. These main clubs include Math Club, STEM Club, and First LEGO League. In Math Club, students learned about topics such as physics, trigonometry, and calculus. Our STEM Club, which is going on right now, is a club where students are learning computer programming, learning how to use Arduino microprocessor kits and breadboard electrical circuits in order to build robots. My favorite club that I've ever joined is the Merrimack Middle School's First LEGO League team called MMS Legabots. In this league, students used EV3 robotic kits to build and program robots, and we named ours Timmy. This robot worked through a challenging obstacle course, and in addition, our team had to work towards solving problems in everyday life, such as making the recycling process more efficient. This competitive team made it to the state competition placing nineteenth out of fifty teams in the state. Through all these experiences, brought to students, the math and science clubs that we've run, students have been motivated, inspired, to learn more about science, technology, engineering, and math.
Thank you for all the kind words, Olivia. I'm just going to start out by saying it's been a pleasure to work with so many aspiring engineers, scientists, mathematicians at the middle school, and seeing, you know, who will replace myself and my closest friends on all of our STEM clubs at the high school. A lot of my friends ask me why I go and deal with crazy middle schoolers all day. And the answer is really simple, that when I went through middle school, there were programs like First LEGO League, like the Gateway Program, that really enhanced my experience and got me involved in the things that I'm doing now and the things that I'm going to be soon going into a career in. And unfortunately, in recent years, I noticed a startling lack of STEM programs at the middle school. The Math Club, the STEM Club, and the First LEGO League Program are pretty, pretty much composed the entire extracurricular STEM program at the middle school. And although students have a technology education class that's only for one quarter of the year, not every day of the week, and only for about an hour at a time. So I really saw a need there to come in and start these clubs. Obviously, they have huge benefits in these kids' lives. What I would like to say is, just like you don't let a runner not run for two years and then expect them to come to the high school and play varsity, you can't let engineers sit around and not be exposed to things like building robots for two years, and then expect them to come up and perform on our robotics team and our Science Olympia teams at the level that we need to, to continue the performance we have now. So as I graduate, I'm looking at all of you in this room, and I'm asking the board to please continue these programs after I leave. I'm trying to find people to replace myself, but it's going to be a team effort to keep STEM in Merrimack, and I truly believe that STEM is, is one of the most important things that's going on right now, and we can't just let it go. So thank you.
I'd like to introduce our next first LEGO league with the coach, Chris Trumper, and students Rohan and Sean.
Hi, I'm Chris Trumper. I'm one of the three coaches we have on the middle school team that's the Merrimack Mindstorms. I've been doing this for a while. In fact, Andy's, Andy's son was, and wife were with us for a couple of years when my son was doing it at the middle school, and he's now a senior at Merrimack High School, and he's And he's now a senior at Merrimack High School and he's, he's on Chop Shop team. In fact, I'd say about a third of the members of the team probably went through this program, got hooked originally by Mr. Pym, and, and continue, continue on. But this isn't about me, this is about these guys. There's also a number of other students here that are on the team that are actually in the room, but these guys are representing the team tonight.
Hi, my name is Sean Trumper.
And I'm Rohan Srinivasan.
We are nine members of the Merrimack Mindstorms, one of the two First Lego League teams at Merrimack Middle School. We, throughout the year, we work to find a goal, especially this year. We sought out to figure out how to recycle toothbrushes better. It was pretty interesting and we learned a lot of amazing things along the way. Most importantly, teamwork though. The teamwork is one of the most important skills. You can have like all the practical skills to work with the robot and program it, but if you don't have the teamwork, you're not going to be successful or as successful as just the robot. And it's proven throughout the, the whole curriculum of the First Robotics through that.
FLL has taught us more than we could have ever imagined. Our team has improved both physically and mentally over the past three years. We have learned how to build a robot and how to program our robot, how to manage time, how to create a strategy, how to work together, and even how to make a great presentation. We always make sure everyone gets a chance to participate and learn. It's really about the teamwork. The skills learned in First apply to everything we do and will stick with us for the rest of our lives. FLL is truly life-changing.
This, it's, FLL is truly more than just building robots. It's, it's really the crea, it's really the creativity that goes into making the robots and the presentation and having fun along the way that really makes it a true learning experience and improving our knowledge of the field.
FLL is about telling the world about our solution. This year, it was, the solution was to how to limit trash. And we, we worked as a team and as Sean said, there, we're three of, or two of nine members. So we really have to work as a team and nine members on one robot isn't, that needs a lot of sharing because everyone wants to work with the robot. And the teamwork really was what put us together more than the skills. And in real life, we work better when we work together. In FLL, it's one of our core values. Most importantly, FLL is about learning from our coaches, but we do most of the work ourselves. Today in the world, there are 29,000 FLL teams.
We would be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the board or comments from the board? I just had one and it's, what are the differences, what made you choose this robotics or team, First Lego Team versus the other? And what's the difference?
For, for me, I know, we've, me, we have five base members, core members from fifth grade on our team. So, just working, like all of us working together for the three years really builds a better team and it just happens to work out better. I mean, there's nothing against the other team.
So is it fifth, sixth, and seventh is one team and eighth is the other? Or is it just a choice of different projects?
Actually, what happened was, it's kind of, kind of neat because it transitions from JMEWS. So, three years ago at JMEWS, we actually had 50 kids sign up for the program. So we just literally hat-picked, you know, 10, 10 kids for each team. And this team progressed and they came back and they came back. So this team's kind of, they've, they've lost a couple of kids each year and gained a couple of kids and that's just how it's worked out. And, and the coach, the other two coaches, their kids have stayed along with it. So we've just kind of progressed and, and kept it going. So, you know, this year, I think we had two new members. We have nine, nine kids, in the maximum is 10. So, it's, it's a great, great experience for the kids. And you know what was really neat was that both teams from the middle school ended up tying at the state tournament.
Oh, fantastic.
So it ended up being, it ended up just, it, it doesn't get any better than that. So, we've both had a great experience this year.
Excellent.
Thank you very much. Next up, I'd like to invite the Quiz Bowl up and Andrew, Alex, and Scott. And the coach is Jack Landry from Merrimack High School and the advisor is Barbara Danute.
Hello, I am Jack Landry. I'm a senior from Merrimack High School. And I've been coaching this team for two years now. What it is, is we do trivia competitions with the middle schoolers. This is actually the first we did a statewide competition where we went to the high school JV tournament as the middle schoolers. So they're playing against kids two or three years older than them and actually won five of the matches, such as how good they are. Basically, why I did this is that when I was in middle school, the only options for clubs and stuff were to do sports or First Lego League and I don't do sports at all. And I'm probably the least technologically savvy teenager on this planet. So, with this thinking, there was nothing for me to do. So, in my junior year at the high school, I was talking to our coach for Quiz Bowl and we realized that we were losing some of our members, like we were slowing down the recruitment process. We thought, well, it's getting to middle school, there's a new opportunity or something to do and then at the same time, we can get more people for our team. And it's worked out very well. We have like 16 kids that participate at middle school and these are still the ones, I guess they have some stuff that they want to say too.
Hi, I'm Andrew. At Quiz Bowl, we love to joke around and just learn that way. So together, we joke around, but with the seriousness of competition, which builds to the way that we learn. Instead of saying when someone gets an answer wrong, you know, nice try, we embarrass each other until we nail it into our brains. It's a really fun experience overall, together as a team. We all have our strengths, our strengths, including some kids with literature, geography, or math. And now throw all of that together in a ball and you've got our team of never-ending genius. We help each other learn about each of our strengths to make us the best we can be together. We listen to each other while we work so we all gain knowledge and experience in each of our specialties. It all adds to the fun of teamwork in Quiz Bowl.
Hi, I'm Scott. A great part about Quiz Bowl is how we all just learn a lot. We learn things about all sorts of topics like geography, math, history, science, music, and a lot of other things. We learn this stuff by not only answering different questions about these topics, but we learn from each other because, like as Andrew said, we all have our specialties and we just work together to learn. Also, whenever we get a question wrong and we don't really understand, Jack will sometimes explain the answers to us. And it's really, really fun to learn and work together.
Hi, I'm Alex. One of the greatest parts of Quiz Bowl is our mentor, Jack. Having Jack be a senior at the high school really builds to the experience of Quiz Bowl. With every answer comes extra information, information from Jack. Instead of us just answering random trivia and moving on to the next question, Jack will add on to the answer with history and background information and even some things that we will learn at the high school. This connection between the middle school and the high school is something that most clubs don't receive. Jack has helped to build us not only as individuals, but as a team. With a high schooler as our coach and mentor, Quiz Bowl has become not only a great learning experience, but something that will stick with us as we move on to greater opportunities.
Thank you. Next up is Brianna from our Sewing Club with Anne Bergeron.
Reno Lett is here to tell you a little bit about what they're doing in the Sewing Club and it is being run by Sue Rattell.
Hi, I'm Brianna and I'm part of the So Good Sewing Club. We meet every Monday after school and first we did the pillowcases for cancer, which this is one of them that we did. And then, we pretty much are bringing them to the hospital of the Chad place, yeah, that place, yeah. And then, we're going to be giving them and then they get to keep them so that they, and we're hoping that they bring them smiles because of the bright colors and everything. And then we're also making the dresses for the girls in Kenya. And then, we're trying to do the shorts for the boys too. And they're for the girls that, and they're for like the children that have had hard times. Like, most of them have come from families, from they've lost their families and they've had hard times.
Thank you. So there's been a little theme going, weaving in and out this evening with the collaboration between Merrimack Middle School and Merrimack High School. And I just want to speak briefly to the Girls in Technology Conference. And the middle and high school girls interested in technology attended the Fourth Annual Girls Technology Day sponsored by the New Hampshire Community College System and the New Hampshire High Tech Council held at Manchester Community College on March 19th. The students broke up into a series of hands-on workshops and exploring various high-technology topics. Workshops were led by educators and industry leaders from the local community. And the next was the science of Pixar. Merrimack High School and the middle school collaborated with art and science and co-sponsored a trip to the Pixar exhibit at the Museum of Science. Middle and high school students explored careers, technology, and creativity associated with Pixar films such as Toy Story. They also had the opportunity to visit the museum and explore a variety of exhibits ranging from mathematics to science of food to biochemistry. And now I'm going to turn it over to Adam Carragher.
So, first off, I, I can't help but think that it's such a wonderful opportunity to thank some of the high school students, those teachers and staff members who put in extra time for all the efforts that they put in. And particularly, I think of Matt Spatell and Jack Landry and how special it is to have a couple of high school young men who are willing to spend their afternoons with a bunch of middle school kids and are wanting to impart their passion, wanting to impart what they love to our students and how amazing that is. So, yes. So I guess I, I would mention, in closing, you've heard a lot of different insights from, from our students about a variety of different topics and a variety of different things in which they've engaged themselves fully, in which they've made themselves, put themselves, I should say, in a desirably difficult situation where there's a question, where there's something for them to reach for, something, a question that they have to answer or something that they might be able to do to make things better. And so I simply say, you know, what a wonderful group and the brilliance and the brightness of the future that we have in Merrimack is definitely around us in this room this evening. So at this point, we would like to entertain any, any other questions that the, the board might have for us and, yeah. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? We'll start with Andy, as soon as we'll go down the line. Thank you.
So, those of you that watched or happened to be here when the high school did their presentation two weeks ago, I don't, I think the high school kids are probably shaking their boots seeing who's going to be coming up to take their place in a few years. So you guys are, overall are very well-positioned, I believe, to get involved and, and go even be above and beyond some of the great things we heard from the high school. So this is great. The one question I have for you is you've had a myriad of things. How are you growing next year? What, what are you going to offer to stretch the clubs or the, or the learning to go beyond this? Because this is great, but...
Well, you know, obviously, there's a lot of, a lot of intentionality that goes on behind what we, what we have and what comes to us from year to year. But I would also say the interesting thing is, is many of those things that were brought to us tonight were not things that we do year to year. They're things that students wanted to do. They're things that students saw this interest and therefore they looked to those around them to find a way to make something happen. And so, I wish I could sit here and I could say, this is what's going to happen next year, but the truth is, is the best ideas are those that are, are, are going to be coming our way. And so, what I would say to that, Andy, is simply support in whatever way we can those ideas and those students who are looking to answer those questions.
Cinza?
I know it's in such a short period of time, it's nearly impossible to showcase everything that happens at the middle school and all of the work that all of the kids do and their progress. And, you know, I wanted to point out, I think there's some really interesting things at the middle school, whether it's the theater and also foreign language. And so one of my questions is actually regarding kind of that whole, as you were saying, preparation for high school. And I'm a parent of a middle school child and I think, like, that's my priority right now. What is, what, what can I do to help him get ready for high school? Wait, it's two years away. Oh, it's one year away. Oh my gosh, how did he get to be so old? But as far as foreign language, because in middle school, you know, there's a couple of options. And then as children move into high school, then obviously we've got Arabic and Mandarin. And can you tell me a little bit about how that transition happens? Or is there anything that, that supports, let's say, Arabic or the Mandarin at the middle school? Or, or any talk of clubs or whatnot?
I would say at this point, we, we don't have any of those clubs necessarily available. We have in the past had a French club or a Spanish club pending on interest. Of course, we would welcome those with, with, with open arms. If, if there's a student interest and an opportunity to help explore, that's something we definitely are interested in pursuing.
Okay. And then the other question I had is, I was interested in seeing that video that the students put together as their project, the three month, three-minute video or whatever. So I don't know if there's a link somewhere that you could send it?
We, we can definitely get you a, a link to the video, so.
Yeah, and I, I'd love to see that. I think that a neat thing about a project like that is you can really compare it to so many other projects that you do, you know, being prepared, you know, as the student said. And, you know, really capturing the right video. I think it's the same thing when you do research, right? Really getting the right research quotes and pieces to put it all together. So, it's neat. I think the video is a great project and I loved hearing from all the students tonight. I thank you all for being here and parents for your time and commitment. Thank you.
And I just wanted to note that as someone who was in middle school fairly recently, five years, they, I was impressed at all of the initiative that the students take, but most specifically the charitable initiative with the Student Council and the Sewing Club because I know that I never stepped up to the plate in middle school when it came to things like this. And I, to my knowledge, a lot of those opportunities didn't exist five years ago. So seeing how much has been introduced in those five years is extremely impressive. And similarly, I just wanted to commend specifically the Student Council, Ms. Nocella, and can't remember who the student was, Brittany, because as a Student Council, I'm up on the board because I'm a Student Council officer. And I can say that your, the work you do on Student Council rivals what we do at the high school with, I think, twice as many kids and four extra years of experience. So I wanted to specifically commend you because I was extremely impressed.
I actually had a question for the girls with the Pantene Project. And I know you're having that May 12th. We, what about people that may have cut their hair off and have it? Would that be available? You can bring it. So anyone that's already done the, done the cut? So it's available for them too. I was thinking that because I have some hair at home for my daughter that she's, she was looking for the right charity. So, it's great. So I know you'll be surprised to hear I have two middle schoolers. I know you've never met them or anything. Seen them in your office at all. I know you've never met them or anything, seen them in your office at all. But that being said, I know this is your first year. They're laughing because they know my kids, by the way. That being said, I just want to welcome you. You've been a great first year together, and we really appreciate the dynamic team that you're becoming and bringing such, you know, fine-quality students to us. It's heartening. So there's a lot, you know, I always tell my kids, there is a world, and I said this two weeks ago, so the Fausts don't listen, I know your son was here. But we do offer a world-class education for our students, and there's just limitless opportunities for them to take advantage of it. And it doesn't point in one direction in Merrimack, it goes all directions. Sports, academics, arts, sciences, and really, your dreams are as big as you want to make them. And I think it starts, the opportunity to really expand those interests starts right in your building. So, thank you so much. Thank you for a great presentation. Guys, I know it was hot. I'm so sorry this started so rough for you guys, but you held up great, so thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And since nothing is going as planned tonight, I'm on a roll. We were wondering if it would be okay to, we know a lot of people are here for the track, and they should be getting up for the bus about 5:30 tomorrow morning. So, that being said, would you mind going to budget cuts before you go to the house business of things like the minutes? We're good? Okay, so we are actually going to jump, for the sake of the community who came, to item number 10, I'm sorry, wow. Which is Presentation of Proposed Budget Cuts to Develop the Default Budget. And we're gonna give that over to Marge Chaffrey when the room clears out. So tonight's first meeting's like a false start out of the gates for track. But we're gonna do our best, so. It looks like we're about settled, and we're gonna just jump to item number 10, Presentation of Proposed Budget Cuts to Develop the Default Budget. And we're gonna turn it over to Marge and Matt.
Thank you. So the first thing I want to do is just state the process that we have employed to put forward a list of potential cuts to put before the board. When we realized back at the deliberative session, which was back on March 12th, that we were putting a budget forward, but there was also the chance that there might be the need for a default budget, and the default budget would be $816,000 less than what was in the budget. The leadership team, which is comprised of the principals, the assistant principals, and the directors in the district, as well as central office people, began to deliberate because what we wanted to do is to try and be very thoughtful about the process and go back into the budget to try and see what we might be able to take out of the budget for at least a year. Because any of the items that we mentioned tonight, we consider worthy. However, we realize that we have to make some adjustments. And so our intention would be to put these before the board with the hope that they might feel that these are potential cuts, and that a year from now, when we go through the budget process, we would bring these items back. So what I'm asking Matt to do is to go through and to highlight the 27 items. There is a listing of 27 items, and he will tell you about some, and others will kind of band together. And then I have a couple of questions that have been raised by a board member, which I'm going to address. And so we'll do our presentation first. So Matt, will you please highlight the items?
Sure. Thank you. The first item we have for your consideration for a budget reduction would be health insurance at around $184,000. We budget for a guaranteed maximum of 12.2%, 12.3% when we do the budget. We just received the actual rate increase, which is much lower. So that's a natural reduction to take that we're offering up to you. The other one is the repairs of the HVAC equipment on the high school where the cafeteria roof is. That's $515,000. That was in the budget as a large capital expense, and we felt that we could live without that for a year and take our chances. So as in our quest to get the $816,915 in cuts, we've already have before you with two items, almost $700,000. The next level of cuts are additional equipment, computer software, one AC unit for special ed instead of two, et cetera. There are some additional teams or activities that were offered up. Freshman volleyball at the high school, and then volleyball also at the middle school. These were new, they were in addition. So we thought that they could be offered up on the cut list, as well as some software and licensing for the library, and some books for the library as well. The next group of cuts is just replacement of furniture. We've run a furniture replacement plan. Every year, we try and replace around 25 desks or 50 desks and 50 chairs, et cetera, to keep us current because, you know, there is wear and tear, and we have to go through these, and we weld everything first, and we try and repair it as best we can. But you have to stay in a pretty steady furniture replacement plan, or you'll be buying a lot of desks and chairs all at once when everything just kind of becomes non-functional. In that area also is a PA address system for Reed's Ferry School for $1,000. And then additional equipment for the library in an amount of $12,000. So when you take all those together in totality, they add up to $816,915, which will get us down to where we get to, seeing that the budget failed and we have to get down to our default number. You notice one thing I did not mention is the track. The track is not on this cut list.
So in addition to that, there were a couple of questions that were posed by Board Member Schneider, and I want to address those. I think one thing that Matt said is he, I think he highlighted volleyball at the middle school, which was going to be a new sport. And I think you said volleyball at the high school, but it wasn't volleyball, it was soccer.
Soccer, that's correct.
Right. And so a question got raised that if in fact we eliminated two soccer goals and nets, would that mean that there really wouldn't be that offering? And I think that we put that on the impact list, and in fact, that's not exactly correct. What Principal Johnson has said is, there are a couple of ways to get around it. Yes, the new equipment was something that the high school wanted. However, in this off-year, what the athletic director would do is to try and schedule practice times so that the freshman soccer team would be able to have access to the equipment that exists. It just wouldn't be new. So you just take the time and you reschedule it. And the Booster Club is very successful, and there might be an opportunity to get a donation for this particular amount, which is $3,500. But yes, the intent would be to go forward with the team. So it would not preclude it from happening.
The comment's wrong.
The comment was wrong. And the comment, I'm gonna take full responsibility for that because, as I told you, yes, all the items were put together by the team of 19. However, Matt and I worked on the impact statement, so I'll take responsibility for that. I was glad for the clarifier. As far as the volleyball is concerned, there are a couple of interesting items here. As you know, it was an additional sport. It was to be an additional sport at the middle school. And there, the question was about, is there a way to have that sport still happen? If you go back and you look at the accounts to see if maybe we could make some modification when it comes to athletic officials, when it comes to athletic transportation. I spent time speaking with Principal Carragher, and here would be the answer. There are already 15 middle school teams in place. Spirit Team, Boys and Girls Soccer, Field Hockey, Wrestling, Cross Country for Boys and Girls, Baseball, Softball, Track for Boys and Girls, and Basketball, two boys' teams and two girls' teams. So when that budget is built with the athletic officials and the transportation, you have to think that each of those teams has the potential of making playoffs, and beyond playoffs, the championship. So you have to first take whatever the tri-county league, of which we're a part, says that officials cost, and put that in place. And then you take the, you look at your past, you look at the places you've played, and you try to figure out who you might play, perhaps take the longest distance, and calculate that. What Principal Carragher was concerned about is, these 15 teams are already in place. So if you start manipulating it to try and make another sport happen, these 15, which have been in place for a long time, could be in jeopardy, or you might have to over-expense a line item. And he was like, I'm trying to be responsible, and therefore, I wouldn't want to do that. In addition, because our vote comes so late in the year, you know, most of our sister districts vote in March. This town votes in April. So what he had to do was to contact the tri-county league to say, we have the potential to have a new sport, volleyball. And I will know the night of the 12th of April, or at the latest, the 13th of April. And when we went into defaults, one of the things he said is, we're just gonna probably not be able to have a team this year. So he made contact with the tri-county league. The schedule is set. It was kind of set before our vote, but, I mean, willing to hold out. So at this time, and given the thought that you probably won't make a decision until early May about the budget, what we would have to do is to come up with our own schedule and to try and get some meets put together, because the schedule is basically struck. So what he's suggesting is, not that it couldn't happen, but it would be a bit awkward, just because of timing. So, does that answer your question to a point? Did I hit on it?
You did, but the piece that was missing was the fact that, as of the voting on the 12th, that he notified them to say that we weren't gonna be fielding one because it sort of took the, because I knew they needed for the schedule.
I think what he did is, he told them what the vote was. And remember, I told you that we've been working on default since March 9th. And so it was listed there. So what he said, it's listed on the default list. I don't know how it's going to turn out because it goes to the board, but you need to realize that I've offered it up because it's an additional sport. So I'm just saying, the reality is, if you decide to override that, I mean, Principal Carragher is prepared to go back and try and make something happen, but it would probably be Merrimack trying to set up some meets.
Okay, so that means that we wouldn't be part of the NHIA's schedule?
We're never part of NHIA. We're part of the tri-county league. It's different. Middle school and high school are two different things. So when I say tri-county league, that's, it's different.
So we wouldn't be part of that league? We would, if we wanted to do this sport, we would have to sort of create our own...
We would have to make contact with the districts and find out if they would be willing to set up some meets for us to play, correct?
And there's no guarantees to that could occur?
I wouldn't probably put a stake in the ground. I just think that we would work hard to try and see if we could find some people to play against. But I think, I think the fact of the matter is that our vote is late. We're really one of the only. And so he had made contact to just set the stage so that they at least understood that we had come forward with the new sport. And I would say that obviously, he is the principal, is committed to it, but also understands, as we have sat, it appears that the list is neat and tidy and so on. But I will have to tell you that we have worked on this list since March 9th. And literally, if you look at it, and when you heard Matt talk about it, you can see that every entity has made a contribution, some larger than others. But the good thing is that we have consensus on this list. It might be not something that you want to buy into and you have other thoughts, but what I can assure you of is the 19 members of the leadership team worked on this over four weeks and felt that was fair to all concerned, if you will. I guess it's a good way of putting it.
So, you, can I give my comment? Are you opening our side of the table? No, 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 I was, well, I wanted to make sure, well, I mean, what I wanted to do is give my comments on the budget part, since I have the microphone on, but, or I can wait.
No, you're fine. No, if you want to keep going, you can go right ahead.
So, my perspective after disappointingly seeing the fact that we had worked with the default budget was to really look at what we could do to cut the budget down but not impact programs that affected the students. That was my personal goal. I know that when we looked at these cuts during our budget deliberations a couple of months ago, a lot of us had some problems with some of the items that were further down the list, and we chose to stop short of having to make some of those decisions. Well, obviously, the voter's decision forced us to go down the list. So looking at the remaining items is the way you described it. For me, the two areas that were flagged were the fact that the loss of the soccer goals would affect the freshman soccer team. When I could see that there was, there was money scheduled for travel and officiating and other things. So you're clarifying about not losing the soccer team and just potentially the goals. Helped me with that one, so I'm comfortable at that point right there. I'm a little, I'm not blaming anybody. The circumstances are what the problem is when it comes to the freshman, or the volleyball program at the middle school, because it would have been great to start it. I'm sure there's some students that wanted to participate in it, should it occur. But you're right, because of our timing of our vote and the timing that the district had to put their schedules together, I understand. I would, given this information, based on what I'm thinking now, I'm comfortable with eliminating, because the two line share amounts were around officiating and transportation. You know, and then there was just some, there were some supplies that were there as well. But I think, given what you've told me, I would be comfortable with this list, just understanding where we're at, especially on that part. The remaining items were ones that I think we could get behind. Some of them are a little more painful than others, but in general, they're okay. I do want one question before I give up the mic is that we talked a lot about the heat exchanger on top of the cafeteria, talking about the structure is now starting to give way. I'm curious as to what Tom Tussow said about what steps he would take to make sure that this would be a viable solution for the next year, given the fact that it would be delayed by a year.
Well, obviously, the corrosion of that housing wasn't terribly known to us before we did an exploratory inside of the unit itself and looked at the housing. Now that we know that, he'll make sure that any exposed metal has been sanded, been sprayed, and any rot that's there would be repaired, pop riveted and welded in place. So that would be the plan.
And there's no, in the function of the unit, I know we talked about the structure, but the function of the unit has not degraded anything since the last time, so...
The function, yeah. The functionality of the unit is the same as it has been. It's on borrowed time, but we think it hasn't deteriorated that much in the past few years, that there's been a critical change in it that would necessitate an emergency repair over the course of next year.
Yeah, because, I mean, there's an expression that we have used in the past on this board called kicking the can down the road. And this is one of, maybe the reason it's rusting is because we've kicked this can down the road more than once. Given the options that we've got, if it's viable for another year, I don't mind it.
It is.
But I think its can-kicking days may be over after this, so we'll have to make sure that what we do next year addresses this.
I would fully expect to present that back to you for next year's budget.
Cinda?
Yeah, it's a pretty rusty can at this point. My question regarding that, though, is if it does go out, or, you know, we're in defensive, extremely, extremely defensive repair where it just stops or something like that, what are the impacts to safety, heating? What's the timeframe to replace it?
Time frame to replace it is probably around three months. Worst-case scenario, it would die. Worst-case scenario, it would be, it would die in the middle of winter and we'd have to come up with some sort of alternative heating source for the cafeteria and the kitchen.
And?
Portable-type units that we would install.
And then remind me how much we have in capital reserve after?
Be seventy-five plus, what do we put in, another fifty, hundred and twenty-five?
Okay, so not enough that would cover that if it-
No, not at all.
I think it's important to just point out that we could not find a part for that particular unit either because it is so old. I don't think there are any parts to be had.
No, there, there are no parts to be had and the entire unit would go away and it would be replaced by a unit that does not look anything like that. Because that unit to replace it, you can't do it because it's not the code right now. So it would be a whole different system up there. So that would take probably a couple of months to fix. But in the interim, there's always some supplemental heat that we could put into the cafeteria that would work fine. It's just not ideal.
And it just works for that area?
Yes, correct.
Okay. I guess the other part, too, in reviewing the list, I had the same concerns that Andy did regarding the freshman soccer and the volleyball. And, you know, those are two areas that definitely impact the student experience as well as their learning, teamwork and kids finding their niche. You know, you, kids that, we heard tons of them up here tonight talking about how track really made a difference for them. And that's great and each kid has the things that make a difference for them. So, you know, volleyball, not having offered it, I'm sure that there's some people expecting to play it, wanting to play it. Same thing with freshman soccer when it was cut and now having it back on. So it sounds like with the freshman soccer, so we're, we're able to offer it even without the nets, is what I'm hearing, the correction being. My question is, you had stated that the timeframes could be different for practices to be able to utilize those nets. How would that work? Because I know a lot of times the practices are right after school.
I can't tell you specificity. Cinda, what I will tell you is that Principal Johnson just talked in terms of dealing with Athletic Director Sabian and trying to do scheduling such that they would have access to those, as well as working closely with the booster club to see in terms if there was a possibility of a donation. You don't know until you ask and no one had done that, waiting to see what would be coming forth. My question was, will the program be offered? And the answer was yes. So that's what I was really trying to get at. And I think that's viable. I think as far as the volleyball program, that was completely new. And I would say, yes, there might be some student interest. However, it really came more about, because it would be a feeder program. I mean, we've been successful with girls volleyball at the high school and so it was more doing a staging for. So I think it was perhaps at this point, less students asking and the idea of setting something in place that would cross over to the high school. So I think it's something we definitely want to put into place. But again, we're, we're back to just making some decisions. None of this, none of this is easy. I mean, if we hadn't had, and we've talked among ourselves, if we hadn't had the health insurance savings that came forth, because we built this before that happened and we would have been looking at personnel, we would have been looking at giving up preschool. I mean, literally, that was something very special and it didn't make itself known until the beginning of April. So that's why I say, this, this list is something you saw before, but because of the depth of, of the cuts, we just feel, we don't want to put the HVAC unit up, but that and the health insurance really make a huge difference. Otherwise, because we were level funded, we, we really would have gone places we didn't want to go.
Yeah, I understand that. And I'm thrilled that the track is not on this list.
And that's correct. And I would like you to know that it wasn't on because of all the student interests. We knew that and we heard testimony, if you remember, when we were going through the budget process, there was support then at that time. And we just felt we would take our chances on the HVAC unit as compared to not having the track and not having a viable alternative for our students. So when you speak about programming, we consider that a high priority.
Yeah, no, that's great. You know, I had called Matt on Friday regarding, you know, one place was travel, it was transportation, because there's, we've got transportation for all sorts of things and that was one area where I thought maybe we might be able to transfer some money and put some, a tiny bit of transportation cuts on our list versus to allow for the soccer and the volleyball. And it sounds like the volleyball really, it would, it sounds like we might try and miss at this point. It's past the point where, I mean, it was, the decision was made for us, however it was, however, timing, whatever. So I'm, I'm, yeah, circumstances and I'm disappointed. But I still wonder if we should be taking a small amount of transportation costs, albeit from the increase in co-curricular transportation. We increased that by thirty-five thousand dollars this year and, and still possibly put that towards the soccer nets, the freshman soccer nets, the thirty-five hundred. That would be something that I would be open to.
Jake, go ahead.
I agree with Ms. Guagluyumi because I never thought I'd be up here advocating for cutting co-curricular funding for sports. But I do think that, especially considering the huge increase we've seen from this year for the proposed next year for co-curricular funding, as well as the fact that, considering these are large groups with a lot of kids, then the cost that you would take away would be dispersed relatively lightly. It would be, if you cut it across the board, I think a five percent decrease from each club or if you did the larger clubs, such as First Robotics is getting twenty-three thousand for travel, but then they don't always, that anticipates the largest amount, the largest number of kids when that number is for the team often smaller. So I would also appreciate if you looked into plans where you could potentially cut from the co-curricular travel budget to pay for the boys' soccer nets. Because it seems to me, even though the team could run without the nets, then it would, if both the varsity and JV and freshman teams were all using those same nets that we have right now, then it would eat into the practice time of the other teams in order to allow the freshman team to run next year. And I don't think that that's something we should do.
Any other comments down this line? You do?
You'll let me chime back in?
I will let you chime back in.
No, I'm just curious, it's the process. Because we're making sausage up here at the table.
No, we're not.
That's, that's where it differs.
This is a vegan board.
Yeah, okay, fine. So I'm, I'm a little bit on the fence on, on this one, as far as the nets versus the co-curricular transportation. I know that Principal Johnson was, was trying to make it an even playing field this year between athletics and co-curriculars. I know that the money that he put in to, that covered non-specific clubs is more than enough to cover the soccer nets. But it's more like you're comparing, could we use all that funding money, money, funding for co-curricular transportation versus should we buy the nets, not knowing whether the booster club is able to potentially offer? Because we don't know what they might have been planning with their funds. It's hard to tell. So to me, it's, it's, it's almost six of one half knows the other at this point, simply because there's unknowns on both sides of the equation. For me, the important part is that soccer would continue, whether or not that we had a net. So it passed, passed that litmus test for me. At this stage of the game, I mean, it's, it's almost like flipping a coin as to what you would do because there's risk on both sides.
I will go Jake because he came first, then Cinda.
I just think that the risk for cutting the money for the soccer nets is you're risking the practice time of three high school teams. Whereas the risk for the other, there is a solid, I made a rephrase. If we decide not to fund the nets, then there will be a, there will most likely, I feel like the risk on that side, I'm trying to think of how to phrase it the best way. It makes sense in my head.
A tangible consequence for the other teams, you think?
There will be a tangible consequence for the other team unless the booster club funds it. But I feel like the risk there is much greater for the student activity. Whereas the other, not only is there a good chance that we will not need all of that, all of the funding that's been allotted, but also that would place a smaller financial burden on students, which they are already accepting now when you consider the fact that they, we're funding that line item thirty-five thousand more this year than we have in the past. So I feel like the risk on one side is much greater to student involvement and activity than it is for the other.
Cinda?
That's exactly what I was gonna say, that I think it's unlikely that we're gonna actually use every last penny of that co-curricular transportation and that this is one way to guarantee that we have the soccer nets and a lower risk on the transportation, as Jake was saying.
One more and I'll go.
One final word.
You bet.
I've, what you said makes sense, but for all the co-curriculars to not have to worry about fundraising for travel is a big difference. It's something we've never done as a board before. And I think that while you talked about the impacts to soccer, there's also all these co-curriculars that may not have wanted to do things because they had to worry about fundraising for transportation. This is one of those opportunities that I'd like to roll with it to see what it does for a year to find out whether we can pick the co-curriculars up in addition. So I mean, there's, there's unknowns, but there's also an opportunity here that we're leaving some of that away by taking the money, some of the money away. Not all of it, obviously, but some, so.
Jake, I'll let you, I'll let you bounce. What's going on?
I also think, I, and don't get me wrong, I have been involved in co-curriculars in which involvement due to a lack of funding was lessened. But I think the soccer posts, that is the entirety of the line item for them, that soccer post. Whereas this is a small amount from a line item that is already much greater. So even though there may be a concern with fundraising, it will be substantially less even now than it is, or it will be substantially less next year even with the cuts than it is this year. Because as it stands, you saw in the year in review in the high school how successful these clubs are right now. And this still offers them a substantially reduced financial burden when it comes to the travel and one that might even be so substantial, we don't even need all of the money. So I think that either way, we are substantially increasing funding and it is reducing that financial burden. But then to detrimentally affect these three soccer teams, because it's not just the one, it's all three that would have to share the goals and reduce their practice time, then just to provide an even larger cushion for the co-curriculars, I don't, I wouldn't agree with that. And again, that's coming from someone who is involved extensively in co-curriculars.
Andy, have a feeling you want to go?
Well, I'm, I'm just going to not, I'm going to hand it back to you because we could go all night with the pros and cons on this one. Because we obviously have a fundamental disagreement.
Yes.
But that's fine.
I thought thumb wrestling would have been a great way to resolve it, but we're not doing that tonight. That being said, I do have a couple of comments. We vetted a lot of cuts and do I think the middle, the freshman soccer program is appropriate? Yes. But far be it for us to not ask the booster club first. We are not going to vote on this tonight, especially given the light that we don't have two members. I do think that gives Athletic Director Sabian two weeks to communicate with the booster club. I think not to put pressure on the booster club, because really, we're in the dire straits here as a board, not them. It's, it's our responsibility, but if there's the opportunity that they have, that they can step up and help, it will help other areas and I really want to go over those. We needed to cut software and special education at, to the tune of five thousand dollars. Software licensing library by ten thousand, periodicals by a thousand. Binding of books, binding of books, how simple is that? Just a, a regular course of business, we're cutting that by fifteen hundred. Reduction in new replacement titles, fifteen thousand dollars in new replacement titles for our library. We are doing what we can to keep the classroom whole, but it is impacting education, our cuts that are being proposed. So that being said, you know, if there's an opportunity to lessen the burden in some areas, if the booster club can do it, far be it for us to say no. So I think we have a couple of weeks and if they can, if they can, if they have it, we'd appreciate it. So it's kind of our, we're, I feel like we're doing a telethon instead of a board meeting tonight, raising money. But that being said, we need to look at the job of, of curriculars first, you know, our, our academics first. That being said as well, the thought I had, and literally it was four thirty, so I didn't get to call you, Matt, was when we were vetting the budget in the first place, not the cuts, but the budget, we were going very heavily into the charter school responsibilities that we have and how we budgeted for some, some worst-case scenarios that we hoped would not come to light and maybe will and still maybe won't. And one of them was transportation. So there's, I believe that amount is thirty-five thousand, one hundred dollars. So we have a couple of weeks to play with this. We don't have any more than that, to be clear. It will be done in two weeks because we have to get this to the state. But that being said, if we could look into trimming that, that's the only one I could think of outside of it. And that really goes back to our January discussions. And it's the only area, and I'm not saying cut it by the amount, but cut it by something. And I'm hoping that can take care of it. And honestly, the area that really concerns me is the computer software for special education. Because if it's the software I'm thinking of, it was going to do a lot to measure academic growth in the student and I think that's very important. And I think it's foremost what we want to do. So if that's the same software we're talking about, that one kind of hits home that it's not doing the, the job of delivering the education, which is clearly what we signed off to do tonight in our code of ethics. So that being said, to the track parents, no, we did not have this on our list. I was trying, I, we were definitely supportive of the track. To be clear, we haven't voted yet, so I can't give you guarantees. And we have not discussed it as a viable option. So for that reason, we don't want to give you any false hope, but we, we are obviously not looking at it as a cut because we realize the value of it as, as a whole project. So until the vote is cast, anything can happen, but we do expect that this board, this board, based on our discussion tonight, isn't even looking at it either. So, but everyone had the right to bring it up and, and consider it. So, so your, your voices do help on that and thank you very much. Marge, go ahead.
Just one more thing relative to the budget, because I know we're gonna hold off and do some finality hopefully on Monday, May second. One of the things that's very important in the process is going forward with the middle school roof. And you'll note that we didn't offer that up, nor have any of you, because that of such prime importance. You remember that Matt talked to a roofing contractor and timing was everything. And one of the other good things that happened is that we found out that we were able, for one point three million, to be able to take care of the entire middle school roof as compared to a section and then another section. Well, one of the difficulties is that if we wait beyond this date and so on, this contractor, you know, has been asked by other entities to do projects. So what we're asking is, is it possible to go forward with the roofing contractor to get that set up and scheduled as compared to perhaps losing the opportunity with this vendor who has already said that they will do the entire roof for one point three million? We, we need you to give us-
Vote on it and waive the two-week rule.
On, on the roof itself, yes. I mean, it's been so vetted, but we just can't go forward with a contract without your-
Do you have an amount for us? Is this one point three million?
That's, that will cover it.
I think it was one point one three something. That's what I remember. Seven eighty?
You're the, you're the assistant superintendent of finance-
Yeah, I can, I can look it up in my iPad here in a second.
Well, we just want to make sure we have the, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, and we should probably move on to that before we move on to anything else. Because the rest is just basic housekeeping, I think. So that being said, Matt, do you have an amount for us? No pressure?
No.
You just built the-
I had to log in, so it's gonna take a little bit.
Can we make a motion to cover the amount of the roof as budgeted? Or does it have to have an amount?
No, just as, as budgeted.
As budgeted?
Yeah, just authorize me to go forward with the completion of the middle school roof.
Waiving the two-week rule?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion? Cinda?
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize Matt Chevallin administration to go forward with the roof arrangements and the amount of the one, as, as stated in our budget and waive our two-week rule. waive our two-week rule.
Do we have a second? A second by Andy? Would you like to speak to your motion, Cindy?
Yeah, I would. Thrilled that we're able to move forward with this. I think, Matt, you did a great job negotiating that, to be able to get the full roof taken care of. I'm also very thankful that we are able to put a quality roof, one that we won't be passing along ten years down the road that needs to get replaced. And so I feel that this is the right decision to make as the board, and it fits in line with our capital improvement plan, and that's it.
Any other questions or comments? Motion on the floor to authorize the execution of a contract for the middle school roof. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It passes three zero zero, and the student rep's opinion?
In favor.
Thank you, Jake. So it passes three zero with the student rep in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for reminding me. Lots going on tonight, many moving parts. Okay, so that being said, we are dialing back, go ahead. Sorry, Cindy.
I just had one more request, which is to put the proposed default level budget cuts out on our website, so that it's available...
As presented.
As presented, so that it is available for the public.
Could we just put that edit in that it's not gonna, the edit that we know about, it will not cancel freshman soccer? On your cuts? Yeah, just change the note on the cut list to say that's not going to eliminate freshman soccer.
And probably that we've, the school board is authorized to move forward with the, with us on here, everybody, sorry, never mind.
Okay. So that one's good, okay. So that being said, we will be putting the proposed cut list on our website as soon as possible for the public to take in what, what we're facing, to get to the eight hundred and sixteen thousand dollar cut based on our default budget, which is another new thing. Our board's doing all these new things today. So that being said, are there any other questions or comments on the proposed cut list? Seeing none, we will go to, back to item number seven, which is the approval of the April fourth, two thousand sixteen minutes. Do I have a motion to accept the April fourth minutes made by Andy? Is there a second? Seconded by Cindy? And... Are there, actually, we'll give a moment if the track guys, I see there's some clearing out, so. Fair enough. I think we're shuffling along, so are there any edits to the April fourth, twenty sixteen minutes? Jake?
The only one I noticed was on page five, line one ninety-three, and then again on two twenty-six, there shouldn't be an H in Sarah Mason's name. Oh, and again on two thirty-three.
Line two thirty-three? So it was lines one ninety-three, two thirty-three, and...
One ninety-three, two twenty-six, and two thirty-three.
Thank you, I didn't get the second one either. There it is. And I only had a couple, Andy, you had none? Page two? Lines seventy-one, seventy, seventy-one. I believe it should be citing research conducted in two thousand twelve by Harvard's Chan School of Public Health. So apostrophe S on Harvard, and I think that, and just get rid of the preceding it, so it's not the Harvards. And then on page thirteen, line six twenty-two. And it is, I want to state that due longevity of the second and third charges, we'd like quarterly updates to, to be included in those charges. The first one is due in September, so they don't need to do quarterly updates, they only have the summer. And that's all I had. So we will put the minutes of April fourth to a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Student rep's opinion?
In favor.
So the motion passes three zero with the student rep in favor. Onto item number seven, the acceptance of gifts and grants under five thousand dollars with Matt.
Thank you very much. Tonight, we have a gathering that was given to the Mastacola Elementary School Library, the amount of six hundred and ninety-five dollars in the memory of a staff member that recently passed away, Mrs. Ruth Norbert. So we have that before you for your acceptance this evening.
Do I have a motion to accept the gift of six hundred and ninety-five dollars? Cindy?
I'd like to make a motion, we accept the gift of six hundred and ninety-five dollars with our gratitude.
Is there a second? Seconded by Andy. Any comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed, none? Student rep's position?
In favor.
Student rep is in favor, passes three zero with the student rep in favor. And we're moving, and we're on to, not number nine, which is the consent agenda with, with Mark.
Thank you. On consent tonight, we have the following items. Educator nominations for two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. In addition, we have one educator retirement resignation, and that's Lisa Leonard, math teacher at Merrimack High School. And finally, on consent approval of charge for planning and building committee.
Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Andy?
I move that we accept all three items in the consent agenda, and especially the planning and building as read.
Is there a second? Seconded by Cindy? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye? None opposed, and student rep's position?
In favor.
Thank you, so it passes three zero with student rep in favor.
I have a procedural question.
Go ahead.
One of the things in our, in, in this consent agenda was the charge for the planning and building committee. How is that formally given to them? Is it through the lia, through me, the liaison? Is it through chair to chair? How's, what's the process?
It can be as you wish it to be. I've already had a conversation with Rich Hendricks. Shannon asked that he and the vice chair come to your table on May second, so they will come that evening to be able to dialogue with you about the charge. I told them that it was going to be before you tonight, the hope would be that you would approve it. So I think what might make sense is to pass it over to them tomorrow, just give it over, you know, email it to, to him. And he intimated, Andy, that perhaps they would have a board meeting or a committee meeting next Monday night, preparing to come to you on the second. So I believe April twenty-fifth is a Monday night, correct?
It's a week from tonight, right?
And so I think you'll see perhaps them going forward so that they can have some discussion before they come on this...
Do they, does he have a copy of this yet?
He does not.
We didn't approve it yet.
Okay, so you want me to take, I can take care of...
If you would like to do that, I would be glad to assign that to you.
Yep, yep. Do I have, is there a word version of this?
All you have to do is make contact with Cindy and she'll...
Okay, great.
Facilitate that.
Yep.
Okay, so thank you for doing that, Andy. Onto item number eleven, which is school board committee assignments for twenty sixteen, seventeen. And you all have in your, from your packets, you have the list of assignments. You'll see a couple of things that are changed. First, we got rid of the academic assignments, the subject area assignments, because we're doing that quarterly with, with our professional staff. And there are two proposed coming up, and that is a communications committee and a policy committee. And the reason for that is I think we looked at the communications and how we've improved them. We do hear from constituents about improving communications, adding to the communication streams that we have, enhancing them, and just not only keeping an open ear, but an open eye to what we wanna do with that. So putting together a communications assignment and what this would be as a board member working with administration, because they would definitely have what you would call the, the resources to be able to execute any communications ideas. And of course, just like any board assignment, it comes periodically to the table for summary updates. So having that being said, you know, we wanna make sure that we are moving forward in our board's continuous commitment to improving communications, both to parents, students, and constituents. So we know what we would call some anecdotal feedback. I think that there's some measured things we can look at for communications and kinda going through a plan, so being something that's not been established before, it's not gonna have a backbone, it's gonna build a backbone. And having something that will have continuity to it, so we are always looking at evolving communication methods is, is gonna help us as a board to be able to communicate with, with, with the community. So that's the first, and the second is policy. And we, as I mentioned months ago at the board meeting, that we do have policies that are over, that haven't been looked at for ten years. We are, in my exposure at the NHSBA, where we were one of the few districts that don't have a policy committee, because policy is the first, kinda the first job of, of a governing board. So that being said, making sure what we have is fresh, relevant, making sure we have policies, not for the sake of building policy, but policies that are relevant to the current execution of a, of an education. And then also looking at things we've done all along, when the law changes, that's course of business, that's gonna come to us on an as-needed basis and go through the same process, because it usually comes with the enactment of a law and a timeline to enact any policy to correspond and comply with that law. Same with district need, as district, the district has found, like with our technology policy, that there's a need to structure a policy to make sure that there's a consistent understanding of, you know, how technology is to appropriately be used, that we have that ability to develop it too. This, this position wouldn't do that, it's making sure that what we have is, is relevant and current and, and properly and timely reviewed. So making sure there's just a system put in place, so it's, it's always, it's always on top of itself. And so those are the only two new ones. The other ones obviously are standing ones, some meet periodically, some are what we call the three thirties, so the ones that meet right after school, but before we, we might get out of work, trying to share the workload on those. So as I mentioned to Michael when we met for his orientation last week, we wanna make sure that everyone gets just one, maybe one, I think we could probably spread it out if everyone gets one. And so we don't have one person kind of carrying the heavy load of the inconvenient appointments and still can get the work done. So considering that, knowing what you have in front of you, if you can, in the next couple of weeks, I'll be reaching out to Davis and Michael, since they could not join us legally. And we will just reach out, and if you can give me what I would call your top five, and make sure that there's one three thirty, as I would call it in them, and I think we all know which ones they are, I'll make sure Michael knows which ones they are, and we'll, we'll try to share the load so no one has too big of a, of a load to carry, if that makes sense. Andy?
Yeah, I, I actually have a request, and I'd like to get Cindy's read on this. I know you and I talked a little bit about the two new committees. One of the things that we haven't done as a board, as a complete board, was talk about the committee in terms of who, who initially makes it up. I know it will grow and evolve, but the communication, we talked briefly, you know, a while back, the policy, we've talked a little bit. I'd like to suggest that we have an agenda item on our next meeting, when all of us can be there, to just talk through so everybody's clear on the purpose of communications and policy, so that we understand who the initial contributors will be, whether it's administration, who from administration, or what, what roles in administration, as well as the board, so that we sort of go in with a little more grounding, and, and make sure everybody in the board has a chance to chime in as well. So that's, I'd like to, for those two committee assignments anyway, I'd like us to at least talk through them.
You bet, and that's definitely fair enough, but I think we wanna look at is, we still wanna fill them, and I don't think that, that necessarily gets delayed, but the charge, I think, is gonna grow, and I don't think it's gonna be finite for either of them. If we find that there's a need, it's just like we do with planning and building. If you feel that as a board, there's a need for a communication study, then that will go through communications, and then that will go to the liaison for that and work with administration. But first and foremost, I definitely see that the first line of defense is always being the superintendent and her appropriate designees based upon, based upon what she's being requested to do. So that gets, allows her to pull in talent as appropriate and not have specific talents sitting there that may not have what you would call, you know, a horse in the race for, for what we're looking to do for that area.
Right, I understand, I'd just like to have us have the conversation...
Oh, absolutely.
With all the tables, so we're, we're vetted out with it, and we're all sort of in agreement, so that...
You bet. Cindy?
Yeah, and I've got a few things, you know, just on a list, you know, we moved forward, you know, as a group with the survey regarding the calendar. There's a number of other things that have come to our attention and request and some ideas, so I think, you know, knowing that we were going into election, the change of the school board, we've kinda sat tight on that for a few weeks, and, you know, can jump back in now that we have our full board and we're ready to move forward. I think also, looking at some of these things now is important as we prepare for our next budget, so if there's any budgetary cost to support our communications effort or training for any district staff or anything like that, that it's not too soon to talk about it.
Right, and I think, you know, when you look at the next, you look at July first, but we're also looking at September, and I think how we approach communications to, you know, parents and students in the next year, the ideas coming up that gives us a good summer to work on that kind of thing as well. So that area will also be improved by having a structure in place and to, to kind of guide it, and then of course, report back to the board, areas of identification where, where improvements can be realized. So I think that's awesome.
And I agree with board member Schneider that it makes sense to talk about it next week when we're all here together.
Oh, definitely. May second. I'm not coming next week.
Next school board meeting, is what I meant.
You bet. So if you could just give me what areas of interest you have, when it comes to communication and policy, we'll obviously be talking more about it, but if it's an area that you're interested in, definitely let me know, and we will go from there. Any other, oh, and there's also small descriptions of the different assignments, in case it's something you haven't done before in your packets. So Marge presented that, you're, at your place saying tonight. So are there any other questions or comments on assignments? We're moving along. Item number twelve is other, we'll start with par de correspondence. Is there any correspondence to come before the board? Andy?
I know that we all have received many emails as an overall board about the track, but I also have received some individual ones as the track as well from several, so, but it was all pretty much on the same theme. I also received a couple of communications about areas that we should look at when we do, look at our achieving default budget, some of the, some input from the constituents about things to look at that they'd like to see, so.
Okay. Others? Cindy?
I received an email regarding PFOA and potentially testing Reed's Ferry ground soil. I believe that we'll discuss it a little bit further under the other, or new business, I'm sorry. So I won't say anything else about that. And then also, I received an email about the constituent that may be interested in serving on the budget committee if there's a vacancy, so the person had asked for information of when it would be publicly posted and whatnot.
Excellent. So we did, I also received that PFOA testing email, I believe we're on the same one. We received eleven different emails from eleven constituents supporting keeping the track and the budget. And also, we received within one of those emails, suggestion, request and suggestions on improving voter education going into elections. So, you know, again, that's another, it all comes back to communications, so those were the ones we got in the last couple of weeks. Moving on to item B, comments, are there any comments from the board? Seeing none, we're going on to item thirteen, new business. Do we have new business to come before the board? Administration? Matt?
An update on the PFOA situation. Currently, right now, we have had all water samples taken from each school, and it's being sent down to the lab to be tested, so every school that we have in the district, regardless of its proximity, even though the water is coming from the Merrimack Village Water District, we wanna be assured of what we have coming in the school is, is good and up to specifications. As far as the ground testing, St. Gaban is paying for anything within a one-mile radius of the plant. Reed's Ferry School is one point two-five miles, so it is just a quarter mile outside their radius. So I've been talking with James Martin, he's the public information officer for the New Hampshire Department Environmental Services, and we're going to be doing our own, own soil sampling this week. We're gonna do three different locations along Reed's Ferry Elementary School, and we're gonna be collecting that, and we're gonna be sending that to the lab also. The results of both the water test and the soil test will be made public and will be shared with the Department of Environmental Services in the town of Merrimack.
Are there any questions on new business? Are there any questions on new business? Okay. It was brought to our attention, are we, I know we're tethered, but we're not associated with the Merrimack PTA, correct? The kindergarten, that's on.
No, that's town. That's town property, yeah, it's not related to us.
So, but that's another one where I guess young students might be in the range, so, making sure it was not tethered to the district. Okay, any other new business to come before the board? I am seeing none. We're going on to committee reports, item number 14, are there any committee reports? Andy?
There was a meeting on April 7th with Merrimack Safeguard, and I have promptly left my notes in another notebook, so I will report on it next meeting. But there was a safeguard meeting on the 7th.
Excellent. And the other committee reports? Cindy?
Parks and Rec, aye, have a meeting on Wednesday, so I'll have more to report at our next meeting.
Excellent. And Greater Woods is tomorrow night, so hopefully, now that we have this bridge, we'll start playing in the woods. So no other committee reports? We will go on to item number 15, which is public comments on agenda items. So much busier earlier in the night, can't tell you how much busier. Seeing no public to comment on agenda items, we're going to take a moment to sign the manifest, and then per RSA 91-A colon 3, Roman numeral 2, sections A, B, and C, I am going to entertain a motion to go into non-public session. So moved by Cindy? Do I have a second? Seconded by Andy. Cindy, how do you vote?
In favor.
Andy?
In favor.
And I vote in favor. The motion passes 3-0.